The President is back in session. Majority Leader Senator Hahn, you're recognized.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I motion to go back to concurrence.
Okay, there's a motion to go back to concurrence. Okay. No objections.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Transportation, Tourism, Customs, Utilities, Federal and Foreign Affairs, the nomination of Mark B.C. Mendiola to serve as a member of the Port Authority, go on board of the directors with the recommendation to do confirm.
Okay, on the motion, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
We're back in second reading. Are we back in second reading yet? Concurrence? It's not concurrence? Take a moment, recess.
Situs Massey.
The President is back in session. Senator Carver, you're recognized.
Situs Massey, Mr. Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rule, I move to reconsider the... Actions? Sorry, I move to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill Number 78-38COR.
Okay, there's a notwithstanding motion to reconsider the actions of the body for Bill 78-38COR. Any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Notwithstanding the House rules, Mr. Speaker, please allow me to make floor amendments to add cosponsors to the bill.
Proceed.
The Bill Number 78-38COR.
Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to add cosponsors to the bill. Senator Therese Terlahi, Senator Jesse Luhon, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Chris Barnett, and Senator Chris Duñez.
Okay, on the motion to add cosponsors to the bill, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Want to send it back to third?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I now move to place Bill 78-38COR as amended into the third reading voting file.
As amended on the floor.
As amended on the floor.
You want to maintain its position in the order?
Yes.
Okay. On that motion, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Situs Massey, Mr. Speaker.
We'll continue on with our second reading file. Next one is Bill 118-38COR. Senator Salas Matanani, you are recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, I move to accept Bill Number 11838COR as substituted by the Committee on Finance and Government Operations and further substituted on the floor. Introduced by myself, Vice Speaker Tony Ada, Christopher Duñez, Senators Joe San Augustine, Jess Luhon, Frank Blas Jr., Sabina Flores Perez, William Parkinson, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, and Senator Vince Borja. It is an act at a new subsection, 58128.8 to Chapter 58, Title 12 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing an unplugged business privilege tax rebate on Medicaid receipts to be known as the Guam Medicaid Access Enhancement Act. Bill 118, the substituted version, is in collaboration with the Governor's Office and based on discussions we've had this morning with them. Because as I mentioned during the public hearing, it is through collaboration we can reach middle ground. According to a letter signed by Acting Governor Josh Tenoria...
Senator, can we please first accept the bill?
Yes.
Thank you. On the motion to accept substitute version as substituted on the floor, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. I'm sorry, ma'am, you can proceed. I understand, but I need to accept it. You can proceed as you planned.
According to a letter signed by Acting Governor Josh Tenoria, which I will read into the record and which colleagues you should have a copy of. It is dated May 27, 2025. If you don't have a copy, I will read it into the record. Hafede Senator Salas Matanani, "Our office supports substitute Bill Number 11838COR if it is further amended with the following recommendations. One, amendments to add unplugged before business privileged taxes in the title of the bill in the following pages and lines. Lines 17 and 26, Page 2; lines 11 and 19, Page 3; lines 20 and 22, Page 4; lines 8, Page 5. Number two, amendment to add any rebate authorized in this act shall not include the federal share of any Medicaid payment to line 7, Page 5, as a new item 4 under subsection C. We recently learned that CMS has recently proposed a new rule regarding turnover taxes such as BPT. If the federal share is part of the rebate, it may be considered a violation of the requirement from Medicaid to pay essentially the net amount. And number three, amendment to remove self-certification section and authorize the Guam Economic Development Authority to establish the application requirements and procedures through rules and regulations." Sinceramente, signed by Joshua F. Tenorio, Acting Governor of Guam. Mr. Speaker, there are more than 30,000 people on Guam who rely on Medicaid just to access basic health care. But too often, that access is out of reach. Many of our island's most vulnerable residents, our manumco, our children, our neighbors, are being turned away because there simply aren't enough providers willing or able to serve them. This isn't just about numbers, these are real people. Mothers, fathers, children, grandparents who are forced to wait weeks for an appointment or go without care entirely because the system is broken. And the truth is, providers who want to help often can't afford to. The cost of doing business, the low reimbursement rates, the lack of support, it all adds up. Substitute Bill 118 doesn't give away free money, it gives health care providers a reason to stay open, to expand, and to say yes to Medicaid patients. It says, "If you're willing to care for those most in need, we'll stand behind you. We'll make it just a little easier to keep the lights on, keep your doors open, and keep serving our community." We cannot keep turning a blind eye to a health care crisis that's unfolding right in front of us. We can't keep leaving families behind. This bill is about building more compassionate, more equitable, and more accessible health care system, one that works for everyone. Bill 118 is not just about relief, it is about reform. It is about tying support to action, to outcomes, to progress. This bill offers a tiered rebate for providers who are truly investing in our health care system, those hiring more professionals, opening new clinics, and seeing more Medicaid patients. It includes accountability, fraud prevention, and reporting. Because we owe it to taxpayers to make every dollar, to make sure every dollar is making a difference. I understand there may be concerns about the legislation, particularly raising issues regarding the code cited in the title of the bill and its relation to qualifying certificates. The citation of that particular code was at the request of the Governor's Office for functionality purposes, as our bond indentures limit how we structure BPT incentives. The application of this code is to comply with the means to provide the incentive. It does not mean this is a program to stimulate economic activity, which is what the QC program is for. Nowhere in the bill does it mention the creation or issuance of a qualifying certificate to participating parties. Additional concerns were raised regarding the Health Insurance, Portability, and Accountability Act, or HIPAA. Bill 118 has nothing to do with anyone's medical records. To be clear, there is no HIPAA violation because no one's medical records are being shared or disclosed. Mr. Speaker, I've watched many of my veteran senatorial colleagues over the years say on this session floor how much our people have been underserved in education, most especially in health care. Well, now is the time to move in the direction of righting that wrong. You have been advocates for our people getting more rather than less for our government. Don't abandon them now. Bill 118 says, "We see you, we see the struggling parents trying to get a child into a dental and doctor's appointment. We see the elderly man waiting weeks for a checkup that may never come. We see the doctor who wants to help but can't make the numbers work." It is time we stop asking people to wait, to wait for the next budget, the next fix, the next crisis. Bill 118 gives us a chance to act now, to lift some of the weight off the shoulders of those who care for our most vulnerable. And with 10 honorable cosponsors and Atalube's support for this bill in writing with these changes, it's clear that this bill is ready for a vote and ready to be signed by the governor. I do not wish to delay the work of this body and its heavy agenda for this session. And so I respectfully ask my colleagues that because of this collaboration between the legislative and executive branch, that we show the people of Guam, we are not only working together, but willing to invest in them, fight for them, and start building a health care system that serves everyone, not just for those who can afford it. Again, Mr. Speaker, I request to move this substituted version of Bill 118 to the third reading file.
Thank you very much. On the bill as substituted on the floor, are there any senators wishing to test it, to speak? On the bill, good gentleman from Ipana, you're recognized.
Situs Massey, Mr. Speaker, and buenas noches to the people of Guam. Thank you for tuning in to watch this session, and thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on the bill. The bill, in the title, says that this bill is to be known as the Guam Medicaid Access Enhancement Act. In the legislative findings and intent, it reads, "The availability and accessibility of Medicaid services on Guam have been limited by several factors, including an insufficient number of health care providers willing to accept Medicaid patients, limited health care providers servicing the Medicaid population, and limited locations for Medicaid services across the island." The findings and intent further reads, as stated by the author, "There are over 30,000 Medicaid enrollees on Guam, representing nearly 20% of the island's population. And despite this significant enrollment, many eligible residents face challenges in accessing care due to the limited number of health care providers and facilities that accept Medicaid patients." And here's where my first issue with the bill lies, is that I feel like the entire premise that this bill somehow improves access for patients on Medicaid stands on shaky ground. And I say that because simple research shows that the Department of Public Health and Social Services has over 177 clinics, to include both hospitals, that accept Medicaid. There are also 90 providers in the Philippines that also accept Medicaid. It was said that individuals struggling to bring their child to the dentist might have issues because of lack of access, but I beg to differ. Gentle care is on the list of Medicaid providers. So is Minnet's Pharmacy, Lombard Health, all of our major clinics, American Medical Center, Seventh Day Adventist, FHP, IHP, again, both hospitals, and nearly 200 different medical providers. Mr. Speaker, I didn't even know we had that many clinics on Guam. And so I question, I question this premise that we need to give a tax break to the doctors who operate these clinics because Medicaid patients have nowhere to go. That's simply false, Mr. Speaker, because Medicaid patients can go to any of these providers. I printed it out almost around, it's 20 pages of providers listed that accept Medicaid on our island. Yet in the public hearing, the narrative was that we need to give a tax break to the doctors so that more people will accept Medicaid, when clearly the data shows that we have about 200 medical providers on Guam and also 100 in the Philippines that already accept Medicaid. So what are we really talking about here? We're talking about access to a tax break for the doctors. That is going to erase $5.7 million of general fund revenues. One of my colleagues was talking about the big beautiful bill and the uncertainty, the cuts, some pending, some that have already happened. And I just don't think our government is in a position to write off $6 million to solve a problem that I don't believe exists. There's no doubt that our people need access. But let's be honest to the people of Guam, our people need access not to Medicaid providers, they need access to good old fashioned, quality health care. They need access to the public health clinic in Maguila. They need access to the Inilahan Public Health Clinic that you know, Mr. Speaker, is supposed to be an urgent care center. They need access to a Guam Memorial Hospital that removes politics from the equation and serves our people the way they deserve to be served. So listen, my dear people of Guam, because speakers are going to come up after me and they're going to tell you that it is about granting access to Medicaid. But I think I've already made a very good argument that there is a lot of access to Medicaid, and I don't think at this time that it's justified to give a $6 million tax cut to the doctors, again, to create, to solve a problem that doesn't exist. Our problems relative to access for our people, it's about the health care. It's not necessarily about the access to providers that service Medicaid patients because, like I said, there's no shortage of that. And that's why I kind of had to scratch my head in the public hearing because that was kind of the narrative that some of the medical professionals and the committee put forward. And I scratched my head and I said, wow, is there really an issue with access? And so it's public information, we obtained the list of the providers, the Medicaid providers, and it just didn't make sense. But what this bill will do is make dollars. This bill will save the clinics $117 per Medicaid patient. The grand total of that, the impact to our coffers will be around $6 million. This is according to testimony in the public hearing. $6 million, that's what GDOE has to pay Northern Construction to open FB Leon Guerrero. In fact, I'm very positive my colleagues in here could think of a bunch of things that $6 million could fund, crucial, important things. And as we contemplate a hearing soon on another measure that aims to give a tax break, a BPT tax break, I don't think now's the time to be giving tax breaks. I think we need to see where we are with these federal cuts that are pending, where we are with this big beautiful budget that's coming down. And, Mr. Speaker, with all due respect to the doctors and the clinics, Situs Massey, I'm very grateful for the services that they provide to the people of Guam. But these doctors will be the first ones to tell you that the issue is about access to quality health care that the people of Guam deserve. I don't think they'll deny that. I'm pretty sure they wouldn't mind a $6 million tax cut, but I'm also very positive that they will agree that we should be focused on providing quality health care to our people, on holding the governor and the administration accountable, accountable for the lack of access to public health facilities that has led to Guam having one of the highest infant mortality rates in the nation. Those are the real problems surrounding health care, not giving a tax break to people I would argue don't necessarily need it. Even if it was some sort of thank you, thank you for accepting Medicaid, I don't think we should be in the business of handing out $6 million thank yous. And I really wish that the bill was about providing access. But as I've stated, Mr. Speaker, with all due respect, that access is there. And instead of providing a tax break to the tune of $6 million, I think we need to concentrate on fixing our broken health care system. And I don't think we can do that by removing money from the general fund that would go towards these much needed improvements. Situs Massey, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on the bill, and I hope that it does have 10 cosponsors. I understand that this bill, even with the support of Atalube, is likely to pass, but I just wanted to tell the people of Guam that, you know, there was a lot of marketing behind this bill. You know, the title itself purports to grant access for Medicaid patients. And I think I've shown the people of Guam that that access is there, there isn't a shortage of Medicaid providers, and that what this bill is really about, intentional or not, it's about giving a tax break, a $6 million tax break. Situs Massey, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Gentlemen from Tep-Telahovo, you're recognized.
Good evening, Mr. Speaker. I rise in support of Bill 118-38. I will always rise up in this session hall as an elected representative to speak on behalf of all of Guam's taxpaying citizens. I will speak in support of all measures that support them, that support in turn supports all of the government services that we see around us. Not too long ago, government of Guam's statistics showed that 1/5 of our population were enrolled in the Guam Medicaid program. Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker, our government is more in the sick care business than the healthcare business. While modern medicine has done so much to protect our island society, we appear to be spending more time responding to sickness rather than maintaining health. With that said, we should try to realign tax policy where our people can benefit the most, a safety net that needs to be sure that there are no holes in it to the detriment of the most vulnerable in our population. Mr. Speaker, if one of the main challenges faced by families receiving Medicaid services is the lack of participating providers due to low reimbursement rates, then I believe that Bill 118 will serve as one of the policies that we have been waiting for, that can and will help connect more individuals to the medical care that they need right now. This bill has the potential to encourage, well, more families, particularly children and eligible working adults, to seek primary care on a regular basis and to avoid, to the extent possible, the need for expensive emergency medical care later in life. Mr. Speaker, our government agencies, they really need to do a better job of getting more physicians involved. They all have access to great technologies, to include telehealth, to make all of it work. That's the point. We need the program that's outlined in Bill 118 to work and to work pretty quickly. We're seeing here tonight, two branches of government working together to address this issue. I support it. It's time to get to work to vote this measure moving forward. And I ask, Mr. Speaker, the author of the bill, if I can be added as another co-author of this bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the time.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the bill, gentlemen from Tumuningue, you are recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I certainly rise in full support of Bill 118-38. You know, I, in the last couple of sessions, in the 36th and 37th, we have been dealing with a lot of issues that have been associated with the medical community. And I got to say, one of the doctors that I have held in very high esteem in all of his activities throughout the pandemic, through all the services he provides, through his public presence in discussing healthcare in Guam, is Dr. Hoan Nguyen. And a gentleman that I've become acquainted with now, who's come down to testify several times now in different measures before our bodies, Dr. Manilotu. And I got to say, for me, I take these dedicated physicians at their word when they take time on their busy schedule to come down and testify on legislation and absolutely say that this bill is necessary to expand access, access to care. You know, Mr. Speaker, yes, we will be discussing tax policy in the next several days in terms of the BPT. We will talk about other tax policies associated with delivery of healthcare and even groceries and medicine, because this is what we should do. Where they end up, what bills end up getting passed, not passed, that'll be part of what this deliberative body does. But I got to say, regardless of the clinics that are currently serving that could expand services, regardless of any discussion we may have about how we feel about taxes and tax breaks, I do not believe that these individuals who have gone out and gotten and gone through education process, gone through the process of everything it takes to become a medical professional, standing up a clinic, doing everything it takes to put everything out there, their service as well as their business model. I don't think that they came down here to testify, and I don't think that others who have testified in favor of this is because they're just looking out to make another buck. You know, shame on us to sit here and enumerate services that are being provided and not know that there's still more to be done. What does that tax dollar mean to that clinic and that dental clinic? And you go in the committee report and you see it? They know the need. You want to rail against the fact that you're not happy with what the government's doing with public health? Go ahead, it's true. Let's all scream to the top of our lungs. But in the meantime, who else is out there doing it? The clinics. The clinics. Some say, don't put more on Medicaid. Don't rely on that. Who are we talking to? People who sit down in the morning, drinking their cup of coffee, having their biskutsu, if they have that, with butter on it, to decide, where do I go for medical care today? No. We're talking about people who are asking themselves, can I get medical care? And we're worried about a tax break? How opulent are we? Who are we to say we can't do more? You know, like I said, these doctors did not take time on their busy schedule. When I held the hearing, I let them go first. Another was there, actually, to testify and had to leave because he got a call. So in these times that are going to be coming up, that are going to be difficult, in these times that are going to be challenging, in these times when, yes, every dollar is going to be precious, I'm going to side on the access to care that these doctors who came down here said will improve care, will expand access, and will help vulnerable people who And if we have to find that $6 million, we'll find that $6 million. Because I don't think that $6 million across the clinics and all these who we're talking about here, that they're going to enrich themselves so much that that's why they were I believe these healthcare professionals were here because they see the need every They know the need, they know the desperation out there. And I'll go back to the committee report, but I believe we may be one of only two or three in the nation that even charges taxes on Medicaid services. For something that people need? I'm appalled. I'm a little bit mummolo, Mr. Speaker, honestly. I'm going to say, no matter what, if it expands services, it expands services to people who need care. And if you're so worried about that tax dollar, I say let's worry about our people first.
Thank you, Senator. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in full support of Bill 118-38. You know, Mr. Speaker, this whole issue will be moot, again, if Congress moves to eliminate the Medicaid loophole. As you know, Congress seeks to ban states from taxing providers Medicaid receipts. And if this happens, Guam will not be allowed to access BPT levies on Medicaid claims by providers. And this measure has the full support of the CMS. And if Congress doesn't close the Medicaid loophole, the CMS may change its rules to do so. And the following is from a May 12, 2025 article posted on the CMS website. CMS Moves to Shut Down Medicaid Loophole Protects Vulnerable Americans Saves Billions. The Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services issued a proposed rule that would close a medical tax loophole exploited by states to inflate federal payments to states and free up state funds for non-Medicaid purposes. Some states have exploited these tax loopholes to take money from federal taxpayers and then simultaneously spend state money on new benefits for illegal immigrants. This regulatory move is projected to save taxpayers more than $30 billion over five years and continue CMS work in ensuring this vital safety net continues to be available for the country's most vulnerable population in the future. States are gaming the system, creating complex tax schemes that shift their responsibility to invest in Medicaid and rob federal taxpayers, said CMS Administrator Dr. Mehend Oz. This proposed rule stops the shell game and ensures Medicaid, federal Medicaid dollars will go where they're needed most, to pay for healthcare for vulnerable Americans who rely on this program and not to plug state budget holes or bankroll benefits. Here's how it works. Under state law, states can tax stakeholders and use that part of their share, state share for Medicaid, as long as those taxes are uniform and broad-based, or they can pass certain regulatory tests. Taxes are not permitted when they are not generally redistributive, and these loopholes, these loophole taxes are solely designed to gain the higher federal match by taxing a type of entity, drawing down a high federal match ranging up to 77% for traditional Medicaid populations, and then redistributing those federal dollars back into the very same entities that were taxed. That's what most Americans call money laundering, specifically certain states that are imposing tax on all managed care organizations, yet structuring the tax so that it only affects Medicaid businesses within those MCOs. The one who will benefit from the federal match in the form of payments from the state back, in California, Medicaid businesses in certain cases is taxed at $274 per member per month, while non-Medicaid businesses is taxed at just $2 per member per month. These arrangements allow states to benefit from the budget surplus to reinvest in unrelated programs, including an $8.5 billion program in California to cover more than 1.6 million illegal immigrants and other non-citizens. This isn't just wasteful, it's wrong, said Drew Snyder, CMS Deputy Administrator and Director of Medicaid and Children's Health Insurance Program Services. Medicaid was designed to protect low-income seniors, pregnant women, children, and people with disabilities, not subsidize coverage schemes that displace our most vulnerable. We are restoring Medicaid to its original purpose and ensuring the intent of the law is followed. In its final year, the last administration approved four waivers that exploited this tax loophole submitted by California, Michigan, Massachusetts, and New York. Together, these four states are responsible for more than 95% of projected federal taxpayer losses under the loophole. If CMS had not taken decisive action, more states could have exploited this tax loophole. A CMS estimate showed that if just two more states adopted these schemes each year, excess federal costs could have ballooned to more than $74 billion in over five years. What this CMS-proposed rule would do is prohibit states from taxing Medicaid businesses at rates higher than non-Medicaid businesses, bar the use of vague language to disguise Medicaid-specific taxes, maintain statistical testing while adding safeguards to prevent system gaming, and provide a transition timeline based on the age of existing waivers. This proposed rule can be viewed at the Federal Register and will be open for the public comment until July 14, 2025. But, Mr. Speaker, what we're doing is, we're actually ahead of the ballgame here. We're doing something that no other states are doing, and that's doing the right thing and providing more services for more people and not taxing. One way or the other, it's going to come to an end. We do it on this floor, or the federal government will do it. So with that, I ask my colleagues to please support 118-38.
Thank you, sir. On the bill, anybody else wishing to speak on the bill? A gentleman from Omuto, to my team, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a lot of conflicting feelings about this bill, even as I am one of the co-sponsors on it. For one, this was kind of formulated before the big beautiful bill had shown its big beautiful face, and it was not pretty for us. And, two, when the idea of this bill first came out, when I first heard of it, I had the same initial gut reaction as one of the retiring speakers, that this was a tax giveaway to the doctors. And I was very cynical about that. But earlier this year, I myself had introduced some legislation to reduce the BPT for food and medicine. Now, that one stalled a little bit, and that's okay. But the idea was that while I was skeptical of these tax breaks leading to lower prices or greater access to services, in these exceptional times, I would be willing to suspend my disbelief and give it a chance. And give it a chance, especially in the case of food and medicine. And so it's with that spirit that I approached this bill. There is a part of me that is deeply skeptical to if this will work. The doctors say this is what they need to provide greater services. There seems to be cooperation between the legislative branch and the executive branch. And I don't think that's a I don't think that's a small thing. I think that's a significant step forward towards cooperation, towards potentially something better. So to that end, I will suspend some of my cynicism and give this give this approach a chance. See if this will lead to greater access to services. And maybe if I'm wrong here, maybe I'll be wrong in other places where frankly, tax cuts to people who are very well off. Whether or not that is something that we could afford to do when we're looking at big, beautiful budget cuts. That being said, I do have some questions for the author in the spirit of checking our work, testing the foundations, checking our basic principles. So my question to the author is. How do we intend to offset some of the potential losses from BPT rebates, particularly given Guam's financial restraints and bond indentures? Because there is a certain amount of our bonds that are kind of fixed. It was a problem I we'd seen in other BPT bills that to a certain level, we had to have at least like 3%. So I guess my so let me let me rephrase that question. How do we? How do how are we going to offset these potential revenue losses? I don't mind taking a chance here, but are we looking to make up that 6 million somewhere else? Or are we looking at cuts down the road to overall budget projections? I guess is where I'm trying to where are we going with this in terms of that 6 million? How do we math the math?
Would the author of the bill yield to the question?
Sure, thank you for that question, Senator Parkinson. First, I just wanted to say with regard to this $6 million that the one of the previous speakers mentioned and claims about this being a tax break. And this was actually brought up during the public hearing on the bill, which, of course, he was not there, I don't believe I saw him attending that public hearing. And when I what I mentioned during that public hearing was that we can't. Some of some of you may claim that we can't afford to lose this money. But for me, we can't afford not to help 30,000 people, more than 30,000 people that are being denied access to health care. With regard to your question, Senator Parkinson. And I think I have been clear during the previous session and other hearings that we have to cut, 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 cut. Because of the federal Trump tax cuts that are coming our way. And I know that other colleagues are looking at areas to cut. So that's that's what I plan on doing. And prioritizing health care, education, and public safety, as well as our economy. But cuts are something that are inevitable.
Thank you very much for that. And I guess the other part of my question there was whether this rebate structure complies with the existent bond covenants. Because this was something I had found out when I was trying to rebate the entire BPT for food and medicine, was that even if I could, even the parts that I could rebate were kind of capped at 3%. So is there a similar restriction here for the for the amount of rebate we can give back?
Are you willing to give to the question?
Yes, as I mentioned in my opening comments, the the reason why we amended the initial bill from a straight exemption and was because of suggestions and amendments that were requested of the governor's office. And again, that was the reason why we switched it to a rebate. And so because of that, I mean, they're the ones who are working with Greta. And that's why it was included and changed.
Yes, you answer your question.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for that, Senator. I appreciate that. I acknowledge, as someone that generally is willing to take a chance on this approach, that it is not a panacea. It is not a cure all for the ills of our hospital system, of our medical system. But I do think it's a step in the right direction. Particularly a step in the right direction towards finding some filling some of our deficiencies from the crumbling GMH. Which which remains an aging facility desperately in need of capital improvements and long overdue replacement hospital. I have spoken directly with Medicaid providers and patients, and many are frustrated. Clinics want to serve more people, but they are squeezed by costs. And patients wait weeks to be seen. This bill addresses a real bottleneck. And if you've ever been on the side of needing to wait for medical care, it's it's not a good feeling. No, for a very long time, I was one of the uninsured on the island. Actually, I didn't, I had, I was uninsured for more than 10 years until I became elected Senator to the 37 Guam Legislature, and then I finally had health insurance. But I understand what it's like to have an ailment, and you just got to suffer with it. And a lot of people are just suffering with these ailments until something opens up. I did it because I was stubborn, but a lot of people are going through it because they don't have a choice. And this alleviates some of that pressure. I see that the bill includes audit mechanisms, penalties for fraud, and annual reporting requirements to ensure that the rebates aren't exploited, but are tied to real care expansion. So that gives me hope that we have some guardrails here to make sure that this isn't just a naked tax break. I understand that the strategic objectives of this bill are to strengthen the Medicaid safety net without growing the bureaucracy. And frankly, I think this is a clever way to approach it legislatively. So kudos to the collaboration there for finding a clever legislative solution that way. And you know, I really appreciate the courage of the author for speaking speaking so openly about the necessity of cutting, 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 cutting. I think that's refreshing to have that honesty on the floor because, you know, everybody in this chamber knows what a powerful voting block the Gov Guam employees are. And so it's not a popular answer to say that we're going to be cutting the size of government. So truly, I commend this my fellow senator for having the courage to say those things. I think it's very refreshing. But that being said. Courage must be tempered with vigilance. We do need to make sure that we are vigilant about our revenue base shrinking as it is in these uncertain days. Like I said, I'm generally ambivalent about these ideas. But in the case of medical care, I am willing to take this chance, willing to take this opportunity in good faith and see if we could get some positive results on it. So I will rise in support of this bill. And I will ask my colleagues to support this bill as well. And I commend the legislative branch and the executive branch and their collaboration in finding a piece of legislation that we can work with. It hasn't always been a smooth ride between these two branches of government. And so we love to see it, love to see it. So thank you all to my colleagues for this discussion. With that, Mr. Speaker, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill. Generally, from to morning, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I have some concerns of this legislation, not because of the intent. I think everybody here wants to do every they can to help when it comes to health care, especially those in most need. And there's no one in this body that is going to object to that. However, the process in the legislation and how to move this forward, the bill was first introduced as a BPT. It was under a chapter and title totally different. And then then it changes, Mr. Chair. I mean, Mr. God, why am I keeping calling you chair? It's the speaker. He keeps changing it, not keep changing, it changes. It changes it to a whole new chapter, a whole new title. And earlier, the author of the legislation mentioned that this is not a QC. But the bill is under Title 12, Chapter 28. And if you look at Chapter 28, 28, it says qualifying certificate. My concern here is that the QC's are made for economic development. The QC's are to help stimulate our economy. The QC's are to help bring investment into Guam. The QC's are not meant to reward someone from doing a, you know, entering into a program. It defeats the whole purpose of QC. And now that's my concern. And if you're going to totally change the bill from a BPT under another title, another chapter, then I think it warrants a public hearing. Because Greta was not there at the public hearing to testify. In fact, I called somebody at Greta to mention that, hey, did you see the substitute version? And they said, no, we didn't. Now, I don't know if there's lack of disconnection, because like I said earlier, many of them are off island right now. But I do have a concern about, is it germane? Yeah, it has the same intent, but it's coming from a whole different source. Not a difference, yeah, it's coming from an abatement. But the section of law is not correct. So at this time, Mr. Speaker, I ask that you rule this bill not germane and to require a public hearing. And if if you want, I would like to take a short recess too as well and and confer with legal to find out if this interpretation of this legislation requires a public hearing, because it is so different. Now, remember, for the listening audience, people listening, the original bill would take straight off taxes, BPT. That's all. It would go straight from there, and then now it moves over to this. And I don't know about you, but I don't know how this process is going to happen in the QC's if you don't get information. And there could be a HIPAA violation. Because how are you going to determine who qualifies? Who qualifies for this? Oh, a doctor says this patient received gave us Medicaid. Now, that information then has to go to Greta? Because this whole thing is under Greta. Which is an economic development agency. So, Mr. Chair, I'm not an attorney, not claiming to be one, and not claiming that I'm right about this either. But I really want to seek the answer. Are we doing this correctly? And I ask for a short recess so that we can conquer confer with legal regarding this.
Take a short recess.
Reservations back in session. Senator Taidegui, still.
Mr. Speaker, I ask that you rule whether this legislation needs to go back to committee for a public hearing on it, because it's substantially different, in my opinion. However, we did have a conversation between legal and tried to, I guess, justify that it's still germane and justify that it's different process. So at this time, Mr. Speaker, I request that you call this, whether it is or not.
Okay, based on that, I have, my ruling is going to be that this is germane. It does not require a public hearing. This is after consultation with the legal counsel and all parties involved. So your request on this is, this is germane and does not require a further public hearing.
Okay, that being said, that's your rule, and I'm not going to argue that, Mr. Speaker. That is your call. But moving forward, during the public hearing, one of the concerns that was brought up, of course, is why are these clinics or doctors not receiving Medicaid? And the question was asked, is it because they were not getting paid? And for years and years, the issue was the government of Guam was not reimbursing these clinics or doctors. Sometimes it would take a year for them to get their funding. So many of them decided not to take in Medicare, I mean Medicaid. When I asked the director, or she actually volunteered the information, that yes, Senator, that was true. The reason why these doctors and clinics were not taken is because they were not getting paid. But in the last six months, we have caught up and were able to pay the doctors and clinics, and nothing is less than 45 days in reimbursement, 45 days. Well, that's a huge drive, a huge drive. Because that's basically what it boils down to, is that we have to pay these clinics and doctors the reimbursement from Medicaid. And we're doing that now. In fact, we're finding more doctors coming in and telling us, oh, Dr. Shea, for instance, he quickly sent an email to us all, oh, I accept Medicaid. I accept it. Other clinics are all claiming they accept it. In fact, 170, or I think the good senator from Jonah explained how many clinics were accepting it. But I do have some questions regarding the legislation, and if the author should yield.
Say your question.
Okay, my question is, is there a sunset provision on this?
Will the author of the legislation yield to them? Question.
There is not.
It's not.
There is, there is no sunset, okay. Why, actually, I think there should be. You know, I mean, here we are, giving doctors who are finally now taking in Medicaid because they're getting paid and we're still rewarding them, you know, for doing it for I don't know how long, but I do have another question, if there's not a cap on it or a sunset provision. One minute. Okay, if the good senator could answer another question that I have on this legislation, is there a timeline as substituted? Okay. What was the reasoning for the change in, I mean, unpledged, it's obvious, but just for those who are listening, what is the reasoning for unplugged being substituted in here?
Would you like to give to the question?
The reasoning behind it, well, first and foremost, is in conversations with the administration regarding the language, that was one of the things that they requested because of the bond covenants.
Okay, so this is the 2% only, of the 5%, only 2%, meaning unplugged, correct? That's, that's what it means, right? 2% only.
I believe so, yes.
Because now this legislation, Mr. Speaker, is going through GIDA, Guam Economic Development Authority, in consultation with Public Health Service, shall promulgate rules and regulations in accordance to the AAA process, is 90 days really enough time? Because some of the QC's that have been put together at GIDA takes a lot longer than 90 days. And this is something totally different and totally new. So is she amenable to at least making this 120 days?
Would you yield to the question?
Thank you for the question, Senator Taidegui. I would not be amenable to it. Again, this is a collaborative effort between the administration and legislative branch. Public Health testified in support of this bill when they were here on the day of the public hearing, as well as the Guam Memorial Hospital and the Bureau of Women Affairs, and everyone said the same thing. They didn't have any concerns regarding any timelines.
Thank you to the good senator for answering my question on that. I know I'm missing something else that I have written down, but I'll just leave it at that for the sake of moving forward on this. I do have some reservations about this legislation. The intent, I do support. But then again, are we really fixing the issue on Medicaid by providing this tax incentive? And having it without a sunset provision is quite, you know, I mean, we're going to have to come back one day if we're starting to see that the payments are coming in and that the majority of people on this island that do see these clinics, I mean, the majority of them have Medicaid. I don't think any doctor is going to turn them away now that they're finally getting paid. So I think that, you know, Mr. Speaker, I'm hoping that maybe they will consider on the closing to add an amendment to put a sunset provision on this. So other than that, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any seven wishing. Ranking member, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Speaker, for giving me an opportunity to speak on this measure. I rise as the proud co-sponsor of Bill 118-38. Mr. Speaker, you know, I don't usually speak this blunt, and maybe it could be due to the lateness of the hour or the uninformed remarks of a previous speaker, but I cannot believe that some are letting their bias blind them so blatantly.
Point of personal privilege, Mr. Speaker, point of personal privilege.
Mr. Speaker. Ask.
Yes, the previous speaker, it was mentioned, so.
Previous as in?
She just spoke.
So point of personal privilege, Mr. Speaker, please call it.
Ask.
Understood.
Ask any, Mr. Speaker, as I was rudely interrupted, ask any Medicaid patient if they feel that there is enough access for them to see a doctor or a dentist or their therapist. And the answer is clear, Mr. Speaker, no. Now, why could that be? If, as the information presented on this floor shows, more than 200 providers are at home or a short plane ride away. It's because Medicaid patients are not treated like privately insured patients by our local clinics. In many, many cases, there are caps placed by clinics on how many Medicaid patients can be seen daily. So that means if your child is suddenly sick, you probably can't book an appointment. That means if you're trying to see a specialist, Mr. Speaker, you're stuck waiting weeks or months for critical care. And that's the best-case scenario for many on this lifeline program. Imagine how much harder it is if you work part-time without sick leave. Imagine, Mr. Speaker, if you don't own a car. Imagine if you rely on a caregiver. But these limits aren't because, as some have suggested on this floor, because of greed. It's because, as the good author has said, the numbers don't add up. Between complicated rules, reporting and coding, delayed payments, and other bureaucratic retake, it just doesn't make business sense for our local doctors to rely so heavily on Medicaid. Because doing so can put them out of business. And that domino effect is something our health care providers cannot make work. So, Mr. Speaker, this bill, it provides a solution. It makes it more affordable and incentivizes treating, incentivizes treating and healing Medicaid patients. It's that simple. For some in this hall, to be opposed to this common sense, common ground solution, I can't find the logic in it. So maybe it's good the opposition to this measure is rooted in misunderstanding and misinformation, because that means they will be a minority opinion and that they would rather bury their heads in the sand to make a political point than join the consensus who want to help, Mr. Speaker, and who want to do something. So I want to say thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I really hope that the apparent majority will remain steadfast in our community. And I hope that the representation of this legislation as substituted will stay strong and support the efforts of this bill moving forward. Because it is for us working collaboratively, bipartisan support, working with the administration, working with the community at large, it going through a markup, working with committee and rules, coming to this August body and going through the process. Sisus Massey, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this measure and support the efforts of the good author and the good chair on health, who really is trying to help find opportunity to give more to our patients in our community. Senator Massey.
Thank you very much. On the bill. On the bill. On the bill. Almost done. On the bill. Gentlemen from Tumuningue, recognize.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Speaker, and colleagues. You know, we call this the people's house. And this bill is supposed to help poor people. You know, we get caught up in looking at maybe some doctors who have bigger clinics, but the majority of them have smaller clinics. My next-door neighbor is a doctor, a pediatrician. I talked to her about this particular bill. And the reason there's a cap, she's got, actually, she's a pediatrician. She sees about 50 sick kids a day. She caps her Medicaid kids at 10. She only has a staff of four. And one of the major reasons about the cap, Mr. Speaker, and why this bill was born, was created, is because coding is extremely tedious and very expensive. It's a highly specialized, skilled job. And not everybody wants to do it. And for the ones that do it in the clinic with a staff of four, sometimes two of them are coding, which removes them from, again, the health, providing the health care, because they're health care workers. And I moved over to do the coding. This is primary care, Mr. Speaker. This is primary care that we're talking about. The hospital endorses the bill, and the reason being is because they see too many patients, these patients who are not seen, who cannot be seen because these doctors have met the cap, who cannot be seen in their primary care. They wind up in GMH emergency room and probably in a hospital room or in the ICU. And if they would have gotten the primary care from the very beginning, it would have cost a minimal amount, as opposed now to an exorbitant amount that they won't be able to pay anyway at GMH. GMH endorses this because it would, again, help relieve what's due to them in payments. This would allow, Mr. Speaker, this will allow poor people to get health care. Again, as I said before, they show up at GMH in the emergency room. If you talk to any doctor at the hospital, coding is a highly specialty area. Requires a lot of training. Requires a lot of training, and not a lot of people want to get into it, and again, they love it because it's a high-paying job, but it's very stressful, and most people don't want to do that kind of work. And so I wish that we would get off of this bigger clinic outlook that we're seeing and comparing, that these big clinics, not all doctors have big clinics. The majority of them have small clinics. And if we want to refer to this house as the people's house, then let's make sure that we also help the poor people, because that's who this is going to help. This is not for the people that have insurance. You know, year after year, when GMH comes in here, is it, you know, how much is not They'll tell us. And the majority of them, if they had access to this, if the cap were lifted, will have greater access to primary care. That's what this is about, Mr. Speaker, that's what this is about. It's a give-and-take, and in this case, we're given access to more people, poor people, because they're going to eventually wind up, we don't give them that primary care and lift that cap and help the doctors out, alleviate, again, some of their costs, they're going to wind up at GMH. This patient that would have had primary care, who would have qualified Medicaid, and not accepted by a doctor, will wind up at GMH. Maybe not the same day, maybe months later. And maybe that flu has turned into a double pneumonia now. So that costs the government even more money, costs us more money. This is to help alleviate, again, not just the hospital, but to be able to give more access to health care, primary care for our poor people here in Guam. You know, and I say this, you know, the healthier our people get, the healthier our economy will get. With that being said, Mr. Speaker, again, I stand in full support of Bill 118-38-COR substituted by the committee, and I hope my colleagues will do as well, because, again, we are the people's house, and this bill is to help our poor people that don't have access now to health care, primary care, health care. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the bill. Any other senators wishing to tip? General lady from tomorrow in year, recognize.
I'm trying to understand, I guess it's late, so maybe that's the reason I, too, am having a hard time understanding what's actually happening here, why we're being, people are being accused of putting their heads in the sand and the people's house or not, I'm not really sure. The, I'd like to ask the sponsor a question, and I appreciate that there were meetings with the governor, and the acting governor has sent a letter, I haven't seen it, they read it, that the acting governor is now in support of this version of the bill as opposed to the governor's version of the bill, and that, but would this bill, if the author would yield, would this bill allow a rebate of the entire business privilege tax on Medicaid receipts? Is that possible?
Would the author yield to the question?
I'd actually like to yield to all her questions, if she would like to go ahead and present all of them.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
I would like to yield to all of her questions, if she could go ahead and present all of them at one time. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, that's my question right now, Mr. Speaker.
So the question, can you repeat the question, please? Repeat the question.
The question was whether the entire business privilege tax on Medicaid receipts could be waived according to this bill.
As stated in the description, it is an act, yes, it does, it says, "unpledged business privilege tax rebate on Medicaid receipts."
All right. Well, that means that 5% is what some of these companies claim that they are paying on business privilege taxes, that they are in the 5% range, and they are able then to waive 5% or get rebated on 5% of the business privilege taxes owed. I don't understand how that's not a bond covenant, even though the word "unpledged" was put into some parts of this bill, like the beginning of the title of C, it's not put into the actual rebate. And rebate on 5% of taxes is more than even our small businesses are getting a break on, they get a break up to, and pay taxes on 3%, and the 3% has all been pledged, so nobody can get a greater break than that right now. But these businesses now will be able to get a 5% tax break. That's what it seems to appear in subsection D. And if you add up under C, you get a 20% tax break if you, just on all your receipts, period. Then you get an additional 20% tax rebate if, for all, for each qualified health care professional employed or independently contracted. That could be, I don't know, five employees, 20% for five employees is 100%. I don't know. And then there's another 20% if, for every location. And then it says, "the maximum shall not exceed the total amount of business privilege tax owed on Medicaid receipts," which I'm guessing is 5% in some cases, 3% for those very small companies, maybe? So that's not making sense to me right now. And they could not, at the hearing, prove that these people, some of my colleagues say, 30,000 people are being denied access to health care because 30,000 people are under Medicaid? That's inaccurate. It's actually 30,000 people have access to health care because they are on Medicaid. They have the ability to see doctors, they have the ability to go to the public health clinics, especially if they were open. They could receive care for their Medicaid. They, there wasn't, it was not proven at the hearing, it was, it's a theory, and I respect this theory, it's just that we haven't seen it proven in the other reductions of BPT, but the theory is that saving the doctors, some BP, or the clinics, or these providers, this percentage of BPT is going to increase the number of patients seen. That's like when they said, "we are going to hire more employees if you reduce our BPT," or "we're going to do other things." We haven't, even though we've asked revenue tax to keep this data so that they can prove it to us, and it's easy then, there's no debate, but they were not able to do that. That's what we found out in the hearings that we've had. These rebates to providers are not going to be any savings to patients. So this thing about, "this is the house of the people, let's take care of the people," we're not taking care of the people. They are already taken care of with Medicaid, and we are going to continue to cover them as much as possible, and if federal government cuts Medicaid, we are going to need revenue to cover those people who will then be on MIP. They will be on no health insurance. It does not show any savings to these patients. Their bills are being paid by Medicaid. So the governor supports this bill but opposes the reduction of the BPT from 5% to 4%. But this bill might allow some companies theoretically to go from 5% to 0% or 5% to 3%. I'm not sure. But we are already exempting 90% of businesses on Guam from the 5% BPT, and they are down to 3%. Banks are exempt from BPT on grocery receipts and only tax on net proceeds. It's a big difference, as one of my previous colleagues in the prior legislature showed Lessening the BPT is going to lessen, the pharmaceutical fund for GMH, it's going to lessen the amount of money that goes to cancer care. These were the reasons that GMH opposed other BPT reduction bills. It reduces the money for public health, who needs to open clinics in order to take care of Medicaid patients that might be denied for who-knows-what reasons, and that's another thing. No one at the hearing could answer my question as to why are they not taking Medicaid patients? There was no study done, public health could not tell us for certain, because they said they are paying promptly. And I'm just, it's hard to understand. I want to support this bill because I support reductions in BPT, but I want them to be fair. If we're going to deny the reduction from 5% to 4% for all companies, but we're going to, from the back door, allow it for certain companies on the premise that it's going to expand medical care, then that should be proven that that is really what's going to happen. And if we're not going to allow appropriation bills to have hearings because we don't have any money, but we're going to allow our revenue to go out from another door, I find that inconsistent as well. And this, when one of my colleagues, the sponsor, was asked, "where does this amount going to come from?" Whatever amount it is, it might even be more than $6 million, where's it going to come from? Oh, we're just going to cut, cut, cut. That sounds blind to me, and I think we can do a lot better as a legislature than to act blindly. What do we cut? Who do we cut? One in favor of the other? I really believe we can do better than that. So right now, Medicaid patients, they are being seen. They are being covered, we have a big threat looming, and we need to be braced to take care of that. The only way we're going to take care of uninsured patients, patients without insurance or jobs or Medicaid, is revenue in the government of Guam or free clinics at public health. Open up the manila and put the nurses back in there, they will tell you, they have told us what we are suffering in the reduction of services. That's why people are going to the ER without prenatal care. That's where it has been reduced, in the maternal-child health care. So I'm not opposed to a reduction of BPT, but I want it to be a fair one, I want it to be a transparent one, and I want, if we're going to hold a standard for one group of people to reduce BPT, like, show us that that's actually what's going to happen, you're going to give more jobs, or you're going to expand your business, or whatever else we ask them to do, we should also get some data on this that we can use so that we can be consistent. Otherwise, every single business should come in here and say, "reduce the BPT for me only and not for the rest." Sisus Masi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator, vice speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand in support of Bill 118-38-COR, and felt compelled to be able to speak on the bill, just so that we can help to dispel on any conjecture or allay any fears of what this bill is going to do. First off, I appreciate, you know, the comments that were made by my colleagues about the number of clinics and doctors that can accept Medicaid. But there's a difference between accepting, being able to accept Medicaid, and actually servicing the Medicaid patient. You know, one of the concerns with regard to Medicaid is basically what the reimbursement And as was explained earlier, the tedious task of being able to report the service, that it, for lack of a better term and no better, it taxes the services being provided by the clinic, by the doctor. You know, Mr. Speaker, you yourself have stated that, according to CMS, Guam is but one of very few jurisdictions that actually taxes on Medicaid. Think about it, colleagues. We provide the government money so that they can provide the service, but then we tax that government money for them providing the service. What's wrong with that picture? And first off, the rebate is just on the, on the services provided to the Medicaid patient, not to the entire clinic for the month, is just on the receipts, just on the services provided to the patient, when it can be provided. Mr. Speaker, I know you, because I have, received calls from individuals on Medicaid who have to wait months to be able to get an appointment because of the caps that are being placed on, by clinics. Do you blame the clinic? In one case, as was said by the good gentleman from tomorrow in, there was a cap that was placed on the number of Medicaid patients that the clinic can service because of the amount of time it takes to be able to, just to provide, meet the reporting requirements. And then, when they get reimbursed, they get reimbursed at a reduced rate. And then when they get reimbursed, they get reimbursed at a reduced rate. Hey? So when you're looking at this, it does expand the service. Because first off, it deals with an inequity. It's almost like the government being an Indian giver of the money that they provide to be able to provide the service. The, the provider to provide the service. You give them the money to provide the service. Oh, by the way, I'm going to take some of that money back. In fact, I'm going to take all of it back. You expect the doctor, much less a clinic, to survive? Our hospitals aren't even surviving on that rate. And as was stated earlier, because these patients, these individuals have to wait to be able to get seen, in some cases, it exacerbates their condition when they have no choice now to bring it into the emergency room. What's that cost there? So this does provide access to services. It provides the clinic the ability to be able to expand its service, to, to, to lift caps, to see more patients. Is there anything wrong with that? So thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to be able to speak because I felt compelled to be able to, again, allay some of the fears. Deal with some of the misnomers, the misunderstandings of how it operates. This is not a rebate on the totals receipts for the clinic for the month. This is the rebate on the receipts for providing the services to the Medicaid patient, which has unfortunately been capped right now. They still have to pay the taxes on the other. But as you had stated, we're the only place that taxes, that charges a tax on government money to provide a service to people who need it. I support 118. To the author, thank you very much for bringing it up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. Senator from Jiggle, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just got a, I guess, simple question to the author or even the, the chairman of appropriation. What is the cost of this? That we seem to be all so concerned about the unplugged B P T? Because there's only 3% of the 5 is pledged to the bond. So may the, may the author or, or the chair of appropriations can tell me what, what is that value that, the 2%?
Would you like to?
I will yield to that, Mr. Chair. So yeah, it actually is going to be, because it's running through G I D A, the 5%. The estimate on this, in terms of what this, the, the extra service, the additional service that would be provided for those who will now qualify to go to these clinics, somewhere around 4.8 to 6 million dollars. The thing is, Mr. Speaker, and going back to what you mentioned on the floor as well is, the reality is, is that these clinics, even on the reimbursement rate, and this is why they continue to say providing access, is the fact that, that they're not making, you know, their standard rate in terms of services anyways. And, and I thank, I thank the, you know, former chair on O F B. Because the truth is, in all this discussion about tax and, oh, you know, we support this or we don't support that, this is on medicine and this is on medical access. And the truth of this is, we all know, when we talk about the $6 million impact, which is one of the reasons why I keep talking about the audits. We go back to the 23 audit. $33 million to stand up the self-insurance program. That was not appropriated. That's all included in the governor's transfer authority. The 1.4 billion dollar budget that this legislature passes. And we're quibbling over this. So I'm thankful to the former chair for mentioning this. This is not a deal breaker, it's a deal maker for those limited population who need access to service, particularly in the clinics. We're squabbling over peanuts that this government can afford to provide these basic services. And so, yes, I do yield to that question. And the fact of the matter is, it really is affordable in the grand scheme of things. The other tax proposals, we're going to discuss them. And everybody can put their thought process into that, but, you know, this is just so basic. I'm, I'm, I'm at a loss really on how hard we're fighting over this access to service. You know, Dr. Wen, just go in and read Dr. Wen's testimony once again. He admits this is not a panacea, but they want to see more patients for primary care. That's what this is really about. And yes, I, I agree. Let's just continue to beat up and figure out, you know, when these, when these clinics are going to, when public health is going to open, when? That's fine. But in the meantime, what are you doing for these people? While we fight over it and quibble over it and fight over it, they're sitting there waiting to try to get some access to care. So yes, it's between 4.8 to 6 million dollars and it's well within, well within the 1.4 billion dollar budget that we pass this government and the cash management that our administration does to give this benefit to our people. Thank you for the question, Senator Snugstein.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Senator Snugstein?
Well, you know, Mr. Speaker, I just wanted to, you know, that's what I like about our, our chair now on appropriation, the position I held for six years. This is what I always come to. We talk about peanuts and we're crying over about peanuts to help the people of Guam. That needs to end. We need to move on, folks. $6 million, really? To help thousands of people? Mr. Speaker, I'm listed as a co-sponsor. I will continue to support this bill all the way to the end. And I will be continuously working with the oversight chair on appropriation to make sure that we get the biggest bang for every dollar we've got. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator Matanani, are you willing, you want to close?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I did want to make a motion officially to add Senator Sean Gumitatau as a co-sponsor to this legislation.
Okay, on the motion to add Senator Gumitatau as co-sponsor, any objections? An objection, sorted.
Thank you to my colleagues for your comments, debate support and passion regarding Bill 11838, the Guam Medicaid Access Enhancement Act. My colleague from Talafoco started the debate with a rant about having 20 pages of listings of doctors and clinics that accept Medicaid. Where my colleague failed to do his homework is that these lists show clinics that accept Medicaid, but they don't show the disclaimer that many of these clinics and doctors can limit how many Medicaid payments they accept and how often. Many of these Medicaid-accepting clinics refuse to take on enrollees because Medicaid reimbursements are slow and these clinics can't afford to. So because of this, more than 30,000 residents, parents, grandparents, children have struggled to get primary healthcare for years. They often go to the emergency room at the Guam Memorial Hospital or seek healthcare by going to a fire station. The Guam Medicaid Access Enhancement Act is for them. But instead of my, my senatorial colleague who claims to be the biggest advocate of the disenfranchise, the poor, the most vulnerable, is now claiming that doctors are going to get rich off a tax break. What he and other opponents of this bill want you to believe is that there is something nefarious on the other side. This is the saddest part of their argument because the only thing on the other side are families with elderly members who have heart ailments or have debilitating diseases or children with juvenile diabetes who can't see a doctor because they were turned away. Bill 118 gives them hope. And I ask all of my colleagues today not to steal that hope away from them. I ask for your votes on Bill 11838, crafted in the spirit of cooperation between the legislative and executive branches of government. Thank you to all of the other sponsors, co-sponsors of this bill. And I humbly ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And move to the third reading file.
Motion is to move Bill 118 S 38 C O R as substituted and further substituted on the floor to the third reading file. Are there any objections? Hearing is seeing no objection. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, colleagues, we're going to recess for tonight, so all of you can go home and take a chill pill. Okay? We'll come back right in early, 9 o'clock tomorrow morning. 9 o'clock tomorrow morning. And anticipate that we're going to be going, okay? We have 6 down, 20 to go. All right? All right? So we're in recess till 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning.